Good afternoon. The meeting will now come to order. Hello. I am Marsha Herbert, President of the Board of Education. I would like to welcome all of you to the October 11th, 2023 Board Meeting. In keeping with the Board's commitment to open communication with the community, this meeting is being streamed live on the CCPS website at www.karolk12.org and broadcast live on Channel 21. We are also recording this meeting so it can be accessed on demand on our website and broadcast throughout the month on Channel 21. Public participation will be held at approximately 5:15. Speakers will be directed into the boardroom from the building lobby and are allotted three minutes to address the Board. As a reminder, please silence all cell phones and other devices. Board members, please turn off your microphones when you're not speaking. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I need a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Pataglia, seconded by...
I'll second.
...by Ms. Sevigny. Comments, questions, changes? I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. At this time, I need a motion for the approval of the amendments...
So moved.
...of the September 13th Board Meeting.
I'll second.
And it was Dr. Dorsey, then Ms. Pataglia. Comments, questions, corrections?
I have a question.
Okay.
I would just like to correct the spelling of our CCSGA president's first name. That's it.
Thank you very much. I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Pataglia wasn't at the last meeting.
Well, that's why I should not have been here.
Yeah. Oh, okay. Take away her vote. All right.
So one abstention.
Yes, one abstention. Thank you.
He shouldn't second it as well.
Right. So I'll second.
Thank you. All right. At this time, I would like for the Carroll County Student Government Report, please. Welcome tonight.
Hello, everyone. Thank you all so much for your time. My name is Lamatu Pafana. I'm a senior at Liberty High School and the CCSGA president for the 2023-2024 school year. On September 19th, CCSGA had an executive board meeting, and during this time, we finalized upcoming events that were created by our staff members and planned more of our general assemblies. We also filmed a trailer for our Fall General Assembly and received a lot of positive feedback online, and I think as of today, we have 186 students sign up for our Fall General Assembly next week. Our Fall GA will be taking place on Wednesday, October 18th, at South Carroll High School, and for the first time in CCSGA history, we'll be having Senator Reedy and Delegate Boucher giving the keynote address. Additionally, we'll be having CCSGA's First Ever Youth Forum, where students will have the opportunity to select from categories such as athletics and mental health and hear directly from decision-makers in the county to learn more about what they're doing to help better the school system. Registration has closed, and we've had many eager students sign up. Each high school was allowed to send 25 delegates, and middle schoolers were allowed 15 spots. Finally, our CCSGA secretary, Enyes Lewinsky, has created our first-ever newsletter detailing CCSGA's activities and updates, and they will be sent out to all SGA presidents and advisors, so please be sure to look out for that. Thank you all so much for your time, and have a great rest of your evening.
Thank you so much. And at this time, we will have public comment. Ms. Pataglia?
To have an orally presentation of comments by the public, the following guidelines apply. Speakers with a connection to CCPS will be allowed to address the Board for the allotted three minutes. Only those speakers that have registered online and have been notified by the Communications Department will be permitted to speak. Priority will be given to the students that are... to the citizens that are addressing the Board about an item on the current agenda. Citizens not appearing in person for a public comment can write to the Board through mail or U.S. mail. Public participation is not intended to be a question-and-answer session. However, if citizens have specific questions, the superintendent will assign a staff member to make contact during the Board meeting to arrange a time to respond to questions. The superintendent and Board reserve the right to correct misinformation presented as factual after the conclusion of the public participation period. Statements to the Board should relate to a recent agenda item, an agenda item that is expected to appear in the future, or a matter of general policy which the Board has authority over. Personnel matters, pending appeals, the actions or statements of individual staff, or items related to employee negotiations are not appropriate topics and may not be discussed. The Board has scheduled time on the agenda for public participation at approximately 5:15. The Board reserves the right to limit the number of speakers on a particular topic so that all topics may be addressed. Additionally, the Board retains the discretion to allow additional speakers at a deemed appropriate. The Board is allowing no more than an hour for public participation. Comments are limited to three minutes or less. All comments should be directed to the Board members at the dais. Citizens may only address the Board with their individual comments. Citizens may not stand in for another person or group and read their comments. When the allotted time expires, the speaker is permitted to complete a sentence. Citizens may leave any handouts for the Board members at the table on the back of the boardroom. Please do not approach the dais. Additionally, the public may not display signs or posters during the Board meeting. In lieu of signs, if you have any... if you have... are unable to complete your comment in the allotted time, individuals are encouraged to submit remarks to the Board in writing. Those seated in the audience are asked to be respectful of the speaker and refrain from commenting to the speaker or to the Board members. First speaker we have is Jack Shirts. And if I mispronounce your name, please correct me.
No, you're one of the few people who gets it right on the first. May I begin?
Yes.
So my subject is book banning. I want to start in 1937 Munich, when the Gallery of Degenerate Arts was first held. It basically was a giant art gallery that held all absurdist and abstract art. Its purpose was to mock the artists, as the Third Reich believed it caused... it was caused by genetic inferiority and society's moral decline. These artists were all conveniently minorities. You know, happenstance. This exhibition, it was effective. The German people really liked it, and they also liked minorities a lot less after it. And in modern day, according to the Baltimore Banner, Kit Hart, and all of Moms for Liberty... yeah, she speaks for them. According to them...
I'm sorry. It has to pertain to Board items. You cannot bring other people into those... you're speaking, okay? All right. Thank you.
But banning of 56 books, they don't seem to want them to be removed, but they sure do seem to want them out of circulation of schools. So it seems a lot like there's a lot of crossover between these two events. And, you know, maybe not all authors are tailoring their books specifically to your children. And I propose that maybe these books would be better for another child that is not yours. I yield my time.
Thank you. And to our students, I do appreciate our students coming out to speak, because I will say, you know, no matter what your comments may be on, it takes a lot of courage for our students to come here, so we appreciate that. The next speaker is Anna Somperdon. Thank you.
Thank you for having me here today. I am a student in the CCPS school system. While my time is almost through as a senior, and policies may not affect me as much as they may affect my younger sister, who is going into eighth grade. So something I find that's kind of funny is that when something bad happens, the first thing that the school systems do is they email parents. They say that the number-one priority is the safety and staff of students. But how true is that? Do you guys only care about the safety when it fits into your own political agenda? Because based on policies that have been made in recent years, that's what it seems like. You would rather appeal to the minority of parents rather than the majority of students. What sense does that make? I know you don't actually care what the students have to say, or otherwise, we would have a student representative on the Board with who's a voting member rather than a representative who represents over 20,000 students. You guys don't care about the student voice, and that's becoming increasingly clear. In recent years, there have been protests and petitions that you guys have blatantly ignored, and you have ignored what our student representative has had to say. I am wasting my night talking to adults who are completely out of tune with students' need and who don't care about my education or how I feel about the policies that directly affect me. This doesn't affect parents. It affects students. Every day, public schools have numerous students who go into bathrooms and they're vaping, they're smoking. We have students showing up high and drunk. Why don't we stop that, rather than banning over 50 books? Banning books about survivors of rape, but due to one sex scene, you guys take it out. Every student knows about sex. Every student knows about drugs. Whether you want to hear it or not, that's the truth. Banning things that affect students are not going to fix the problem, but rather prolong it. Bad things happen in our world every day. You cannot silence that. Nothing you do is ever going to fix it. You guys are in a position of power and are failing to protect students. It's not fair. It's not fair that students aren't in charge of their own education. Every high schooler knows about this stuff, and of course, there's a difference between elementary and high school, and I think that's something that's very important to say. Everybody in this world is so one-sided. Rather than looking at something from the middle and actually figuring out a solution that would benefit the majority of people, you guys let the government put you in a box. I know what you're thinking. You're probably looking at me, thinking about another liberal high schooler who's trying to change the world. It may surprise you that when I registered to vote, I actually registered as moderate, because unlike you guys, I don't let the government put me in a box. I don't get to be told what I should and shouldn't believe. And for everybody who's so concerned about what the students are reading, please be concerned about issues that actually affect your students' education. How about having less than 30 kids in a class where teachers aren't able to give the kids the proper education that they need or deserve? There are so many issues in the school system that are not banning books. And I make no apologies... I'm sorry. ...for coming across as rude or disrespectful. Quite frankly, that was the goal, because niceness doesn't get you anywhere. I hope what I say has a lasting impact, even though I know it won't. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Lily Harlan.
Hello, members of the Board. Thank you for having me. I'm 12 years old and a seventh grader at West Middle, and today I'm here to talk to you about banning books. I've always loved books. I read them all the time, so I was very upset when I heard that CCPS was considering banning books. I believe that by restricting what people read, we are also restricting their freedom. I'm aware that some of the books that are under review have some parts that are not appropriate for elementary or even middle school students. I still not believe that we need to eliminate these books completely. This could be as simple as adding a sticker to more mature books, like a movie rating, having parents get an email anytime their kids check out any book, or only offering the books to certain grades. I also think that high school and middle school students should have more control in what we get to read. If their parents don't like the book, they don't read it. There's no need to take it away from everybody. Not everyone is equal. Some kids and parents are very sensitive to this content, while others are not. People should look past the small amounts of inappropriate content in some of these books and look at the messages that they really get across. One book, What Girls Are Made Of, is a very powerful book that promotes female empowerment. Men O' War depicts a strong trans teen fighting for equality. The Freedom Writer's Diary is an empowering story about a teacher and unteachable students who are fighting against racism. Homegoing is a tale of two Ganon sisters forced away from each other and into slavery. Nineteen Minutes is about a school shooting. Yes, we are already being subjected to the fear of school shootings during lockdown drills. Why do we have to take away a book that covers a topic we already learn about in school? It is also not congruent to ban books in a school library when a student could easily access that same book on their school-issued laptop via an approved school website, such as the Carroll County Public Library. Withholding information only postpones the delivery of it. By banning books about people of color and the LGBTQIA+ community, we're sending a message that those kids aren't welcome at CCPS. If we ban books on these topics, we also have to ban the new gender identity unit in family life and any references to slavery or racism. This is just not okay. People deserve to read what they want. No one should be able to take that away from us. Yes, these books are disturbing and scary and dangerous. That's exactly why we need them. We have to know, we have to learn, and we have to grow. All of these books, all of them, are beautiful pieces of literature that celebrate all who we've lost in our nutritious history, and even beyond that. Banning these books is saying that those people, those events, don't matter. It's taking away all these stories, all these lives. It's robbery in more ways than one. It would be disservice to keep any of these books out of our libraries. The truth doesn't hurt. It sets you free. I'm not saying that there should be books with sexual content in elementary schools, but I am saying that the books under review should be placed in the correct schools and grades based on their age rating. Basically, in the words of Isaac Asimov, "Any book worth banning is a book worth reading." Thank you.
Next speaker is Gary Foote.
Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Gary Foote. I'm a teacher at South Carroll High School. Some of you might know this information, but many of you probably do not. The land that we are on today that makes up Carroll County was inhabited by Native Americans for thousands of years, long before any Europeans settled. Archaeological artifacts and sites have been uncovered around the county. Manchester was inhabited by the Susquehannock Nation until 1750. Main Street in Westminster was built over a trail connecting the Susquehanna River to the Potomac River. Route 26 was originally a Native American trail used by indigenous people to travel from the Blue Ridge Mountains to the Chesapeake Bay. Contrary to what is often taught, the east coast of America was not empty when European settlers arrived. I don't recall a school board meeting here ever starting with a land acknowledgement, but maybe this feeble attempt will be the start of an ongoing effort to recognize that our history goes back to way before 1634. When John Smith explored the Chesapeake Bay region in 1610, he found native settlements and land cleared for farming. He also found oysters thick as stones. Those were his words. Sturgeon, grampus, porpoises, rockfish, trout, perch, more than can be devoured by dog or man. His words again. He also found a wide variety of shellfish, trees so large that if they were felled and hollowed, they could make canoes big enough for 40 men from a single tree. One can only speculate what our region would be like if such abundance had been preserved until today. In 1992, the U.S. celebrated the 500th anniversary of Columbus landing in the so-called New World. Except how could it be a New World when over 90 million people were living in the Americas at the time? The east coast of the United States was more densely populated than Western Europe. When Native Americans were living in North America, Great Britain was still covered by a sheet of ice. And how does one celebrate genocide? Because that is the word for what took place. When Columbus landed on Hispaniola, over 2 million Arawak natives occupied the land. Columbus and his men eventually killed them all. Later, similar massacres took place in Mexico, South America, and on the east coast of the United States. None of these facts are in dispute. Columbus kept detailed notes and journals. These all survive. Eyewitnesses gave similar accounts. And yet, there are still more places in the United States named after Columbus than any one except for George Washington. This is not the record of a man that we should be honoring. In 1992, President George H.W. Bush lied to the American people about the significance of Columbus Day. His speechwriters knew it. The press covering the event knew it. Historians certainly knew it. And yet, the lies persist. I was lied to by my teachers. Probably so were you. Don't our teachers deserve better than that? Don't they deserve the truth?
Our next speaker, Tatyanisha Love. If I mispronounce it, please correct me.
Good evening. I'm Tatyanisha Love. I'm the past president of the Maryland Association of School Libraries. Good evening to the school board members and Superintendent McCabe. The Maryland Association of School Libraries, MASL, has learned that a small group of parents has called for the removal of over 50 books from school library shelves in Carroll County public schools, and that the administration has complied. Without going through the reconsideration policy, school librarians were ordered to remove the titles, box them up, and put them out of sight. The administrative decision undermines best practices set forth by the American Library Association and the American Association of School Librarians. While removal of books is not in direct violation of the Carroll County policy and procedure, it does censor and limit the ability of students to have access to these titles. The Maryland Association of School Librarians opposes any narrowly-focused efforts to remove books from the school library shelves and asks you to support the First Amendment right to read that is afforded to students within their school libraries. Additionally, MASL has grave concerns about the new Appendix J. School librarians were ordered to keep a signed document for every book they purchase. Librarians are now held accountable for any book or content in the book that is deemed inappropriate. School librarians are experts in collection development and have been trained in how to select books that provide a wide range of topics and ideas that engage, inspire, and allow students to explore the world through books. Carroll County Public Schools librarians have always sought to make deliberate purchasing decisions to benefit their school communities. School library books are choice reading. No students are forced to read anything in the school library. School librarians teach students the skills to use for selection and how to meet their own unique needs that they have for reading. Students must have choice in their selection of books so that they can learn these important life skills. The Maryland Association of School Librarians, the Maryland Library Association, and Citizens for Maryland Libraries urges the Carroll County Public School Administration to trust their school librarian employees and support their good effort faith in order to teach students to make wise decisions. We also ask that the requirement for using Appendix J be reexamined. Thank you.
Next speaker, Anna Ferdui. Again, please, Ms... correct me if I said it wrong.
Good afternoon, Board members. My name is Anna Ferdui, and I am a student in Carroll County Public Schools. I'm here to voice my concern for the removal of books happening across Carroll County. It shocks and scares me how many books... how many of the books claim to not meet the criteria for instructional learning are also written by minorities and people with very different perspectives from these communities. My favorite poem book is also a banned book called "The Son and Her Flowers" by Rupee Carr. It has been removed because of its description of the woman's body and its surface-level interpretation of sex in a relationship. These poems themselves are not entirely inappropriate. They describe real feelings in a superficial way, but since it contains these topics, it has been reduced to a couple of stanzas. However, this book also describes things like self-growth, healing, and culture. To a teenager like myself, it is vital to be exposed to these views. Reading this book has helped me understand why... understand my own culture. Like the author and her parents, my father is an immigrant. When I first read this book, I was so grateful to have something that closely represented me and my family and be able to put my emotions into words that I wasn't able to myself. One passage from an immigrant's perspective in particular has stuck with me. They have no idea what it's like to lose home at the risk of never finding home again, to have your entire life split between two lands, and become the bridge between two countries. This excerpt has helped me understand what life has been like for my father, as well as what emotions make up my blended culture. The problem with books being reconsidered, pulled from shelves, and ultimately banned is that it takes away unique perspectives, such as the one in "The Son and Her Flowers." Taking away books that do not fit one's ideals for how or what a student should learn limits far more than just the targeted subject. It especially takes away from the points of view of women, immigrants, people of color, and all minorities in general. I'm encouraging you to stop removing and banning books from my school and all the schools in this county. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Grace Crowe.
My name is Grace Crowe, and I'm a student at Carroll County Public Schools. Encourage students to make choices that provide challenges. This phrase is written on Page 4 of the Board of Ed's handbook. These books that are being taken off the shelves follow this policy exactly. They challenge students to explore difficult topics, and they challenge students to grow. These challenges have nothing to do with sex or explicit material. They have to do with the difficult things that immigrants, people of color, women, and queer people experience. These books challenge Carroll County students to think about the difficulties that others face. How can you claim to want to encourage students to make choices that provide challenges while you remove all challenging books from the shelves? Render all decisions based on the available facts and my independent judgment, and refuse to surrender that judgment to individuals or special interest groups. This statement is written on Page 16 of the Board of Education's handbook under the Code of Ethics. And yet, there are members of the Board who have actively and clearly surrendered their judgment to outside special interest groups. If you actually talked and maintained a connection with the teachers, faculty, or students of Carroll County, you would realize that these books are not an issue. There are no students seeking out this material for pornographic purposes. There are no students that are reading about rape and immigration and other hard topics and thinking, "Oh, wow, this is so exciting." Please, I ask you to listen to the people who are actually a part of the Carroll County school system, the students, teachers, and librarians, because we are the ones who are actually affected. The crux of the issue here is that students want to learn. By assuming students are reading these books for inappropriate purposes, you infringe on their ability to learn new things. By taking these books out of libraries and bending to the will of an outside interest group, you are violating your own policies and hurting the students of Carroll County. Thank you.
Next speaker is Shawn Mandaz... Maidens? I'm sorry.
Hello, I'm Shawn Maidens. I'm a mother of three children here in the Carroll County system. We moved here about three years ago, in part because we heard the schools were so good here. What we didn't know is how culturally and socially behind this county was compared to Montgomery County, where we're from. One of my children is regularly harassed because of what they identify as. Last week I was... last week, he was told he should be killed because he doesn't...
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We don't talk about specific children here.
Okay.
Please.
So he was harassed regularly and told to...
We ask that you not talk about a specific child that can be identified.
Okay. I apologize. So we'll move on. I never... So basically, the problems here with LGBTQA stuff, just because you take away the books doesn't make it go away, doesn't make the issues here go away. Taking away accessibility to a book about a topic you don't want to hear because it offended you doesn't make the topic go away. Ignorance and disinformation is spreading like wildfire in this county by hate groups like... if I'm allowed to say Moms for Liberty, and how my child...
Yeah, please refrain from...
Okay, by hate groups. And how my child is treated by other children in a direct... is a direct reflection of this community, not my child. I've watched this hate group push to ban pride flags here, calling it political statement, and now they're pushing to decide which book should be available in schools. I came here tonight to request that the Board please stop accepting and rejecting requests to the Carroll County Board of Education by anyone affiliated or a member of an anti-government extremist hate group. By accepting these requests, you are playing into politics which are meant to overwhelm and dismantle this system. The Carroll County chapter... this hate... there is a hate group that have an ultimate goal set forth by founders in Florida, not Maryland, which is to destroy bipartisanship in our community and waste our school resources. Please do not give hate groups a platform here. Thank you.
And our last speaker is Greg Malvo.
Thank you to the Board for allowing me this time. My name is Dr. Greg Malvo. I'm an educator of over two decades. I'm an educator of over two decades, a parent of a child who's in the public school system, and also I'll be running for one of the two empty seats for the Board of Education for Carroll County in 2024. So, I'd like to talk about, and probably you're aware that October is also National Bullying Prevention Awareness Month. And so I believe that our schools should be places where all children, regardless of their abilities or challenges, can grow, learn, and thrive in a safe and nurturing environment. Bullying has no place in such an environment, and it is our collective responsibility to effectively address this issue. One area where special tensions required for the battle against bullying is the protection-
The ones that have been removed and require parent permission, is there any kind of common thread about them being required for parent permission because of LGBTQ, race, gender? Or is the common thread because they contain explicit sexual content?
It's the explicit sexual content and the age grade appropriateness of the books.
I have one question. If a teacher were to write some of the content that you now require parent permission for, if they were to write any of those words on a piece of paper and hand it to a child, would that be concerning?
I would say that would be concerning.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. At this time, we would like to hear from our employee groups. And I don't know if anybody wants to leave.
Can you let us go first?
Oh, I don't care. That's up to you all.
Good evening, Dr. McKay, members of the Board of Education. I am Cindy Porter, President of CASE, representing education support professionals including clericals, assistants, and LPNs working in Carroll County Public Schools. I speak this evening not just as a career education support professional, but as an educator in our county. Every year since the pandemic, staff across our county and the state begin each school year with positivity and hope that student behaviors will improve. While we understand that there are a myriad of reasons and issues as to why these behaviors exist, it doesn't lessen the impact on staff and the students in our schools. This year, we seem to be seeing the effects of these behaviors earlier than ever before. I have already heard comments from kind, caring, empathetic, veteran staff members saying that they are experiencing medical issues such as high blood pressure because of stress, with others saying that they are rethinking their choice to remain in education. I have also heard others say that they have no longer- they no longer look forward to coming to work and know of several who have already been injured, many being in the CASE bargaining unit. As in other counties, we continue to see shortages in staff even with hiring bonuses in some classifications. Being completely honest, there is a pervasive lack of respect for school staff and our contracted bus drivers from students and family members alike, as well as a lack of pride and respect for our facilities. Carroll County has received a good deal of attention in the last few months. It is not new that our students and children learn from the adults in their lives, the situations they experience, and how those adults handle those situations. It would be wonderful if all stakeholders in our county and school community could come together in collaborative and respectful ways to see how we can positively impact this situation that is moving all of us closer to a tipping point in education here in Carroll County and across our state. The stakes are high. The task is not easy. But our most precious resource is looking to us to do our best for them and their future. I believe that we have an opportunity to garner attention in our county for showing that people with different beliefs and ideas can come together in non-confrontational and non-adversarial ways to achieve this most important goal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Before I do my speech, I will say I was a high school math teacher from 1995 to 2002, and I do want to compliment all the children- students who came, because not a lot of us adults really enjoy being here, so for you guys to come, good for you. Good evening, Superintendent McKay, Board members, Celeste Jordan, President of CCA. Educators have been with students in classrooms for twenty-seven days this school year, fifteen percent of the school year. This time of year is usually pretty good. Everyone's back into the routine, there's a little bit of excitement in high schools as homecomings are celebrated, and there'll be a lot of excitement in elementary schools at the end of the month with Halloween. So why are so many educators stressed out right now? And yes, they are stressed out. Because yet again, more initiatives and responsibilities have been added to their jobs. I'm sure someone will think that educators are just complaining. I'm quoting a member who said, "It's important to note that everyone that I've talked to feels all these new initiatives are beneficial, but without the time to do it well, it's useless." Elementary educators have been asked to implement the Second Step Program, which is designed to teach students very vital skills such as listening, focusing attention, making friends, and problem solving. What has been taken away to make time to implement this program with fidelity? This program sounds great, and educators at all levels see the benefits of having students learn these skills because we hope it means less time clearing an entire classroom of students to the hallway while another student tears apart the room. Because I will guarantee you, there is no reading, writing, or math being learned in that hallway. For secondary educators, there are more county assessments which must be graded online, which is time-consuming and clunky. In addition, some of the county assessments contain errors which make educators question the validity and reliability of the assessments. What was taken off the plates for these educators? Many schools have been asked to have wigs. What are wigs, you may ask, because I did? Wildly important goals. At Winters Mill High School, we had an advisory since the day we opened in 2002. Every quarter of every single year that I taught there for twenty years, I taught advisory about SMART goals, specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, and time-based. So I asked educators about wigs and did a little reading on my own. The concept of wigs is from a course in the Four Disciplines of Execution from the Franklin Covey Group, the group famously known for the Seven Habits of Highly Effective People. I'm going to digress for just a minute and I'll come back to wigs, because when I taught at Liberty, I had to read The Seven Highly Habits of Highly Effective Teenagers. I was well into my thirties at the time. Later at Winters Mill and across the county, educators learned about capturing kids' hearts by, and yes, this is the real name, Flip Flippin'. We all gathered together here about that one. I had- was teaching Like a Champion for one book, and I was winning. That one was about Kobe Bryant and Michael Jordan. Educators are cynical about the latest book club. In fact, when I asked what wigs were, the first answer I was given was, "Somebody read a book, and now we do wigs." No one expects it to last more than a couple of years before the next thing comes along, and it feels like a waste of time. This is from another educator's perspective. We meet with our content teams during planning. We discuss- we're discussing a lag measure and a lead measure. Once decided, we have to create a huge scoreboard to display the progress of this goal, which we need to update throughout the school year. The displays are out in the hallways and they're to encourage students, but I don't think they understand them. We have- we don't have a pre-made assessment, so we have to create assessments to help us measure the progress of the lead measures in hope of meeting our wig, which is the lag measure. This will take a lot of time and will continue throughout the year. I don't know of other tasks being taken off our workload. So educators have SLOs to write and focus on, wigs in their content area, sit plans to monitor, still trying to fill in the gaps from COVID while teaching the regular curriculum, adjusting the regular curriculum for students who receive special services. And all levels now have to keep their schoology up to date. Another educator. Our school's wig focuses on literacy. Every department comes up with a wig, then every teacher gathers data once a month using MCAP rubric to score. Scores are entered into an Excel document. Their scoreboard is in the cafeteria with horses representing each department racing to meet the wig. By the way, it is important to note that educators do all of these things on a daily basis and not just when we're being observed by supervisors. I heard from an educator who was told from their supervisor they were not gathering enough data on a student. The educator had so many disruptions on a daily basis due to behavior that they resorted to asking the student some questions while the student was punching them and made note of the answers later. So she had data. Carroll has long received a quality education at bargain basement prices. It is time to stop bragging that CCPS has employees who are doing two jobs or that we do more with less. It is not sustainable. CCPS needs to prioritize a few initiatives and let the others go. It is October. I should not be giving out the number for Employee Assistance Program because educators are so stressed. The other day, I reminded a member about the National Suicide Hotline, 988, was always available for them to have someone to talk to. I'm going to leave you with a quote from another member. "I am surviving, I am not thriving." That was a quote from September. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I would like our members to read recognition statements, and we're going to start with Mr. Whistler.
Thank you. This week, we are celebrating National Lunch Week. Our food service employees do an exceptional job ensuring that students have access to healthy meals every day. A nutritious lunch and breakfast are important for students and contribute to their well-being and academic success. Thanks to all of our dedicated food service employees for serving our students and promoting healthy eating habits.
Thank you. Dr. Dorsey.
National Principals Month. October is National Principals Month, a time for us to celebrate excellence in school leadership and to recognize the critical role that principals play in school achievement and student success. Our principals do a tremendous job leading our efforts to focus on teaching and learning. Thanks to all of our outstanding principals for their leadership, hard work, and dedication to our schools, students, and staffs.
Thank you. Ms. Pataglia.
October is National Bullying Prevention Month, which aims to increase awareness and prevent the bullying of our children. Bullying comes in many forms, in our schools, in the community, and on social media, and it is negative effects that can last a lifetime. We all can help make a difference by identifying bullying behavior and supporting those who are being bullied. If your child is being bullied at school, contact the school counselor or school administrator to share your concerns and to work together to address this issue.
Thank you. Ms. Sevigny.
October fifteenth through twenty-first has been designated as America's Safe Schools Week. Here in Carroll County, we continue to place an emphasis on improving school security to ensure that our schools are safe places to learn and teach. Thanks to Curtis Pierce, Brian Elliott, the Security Advisory Council, our school resource officers, and local law enforcement for their leadership in keeping our students and staff safe and our buildings secure.
Thank you. National School Bus Safety Week will be observed the week of October sixteenth through the twentieth. I would now like to read a proclamation from the State of Maryland. The State of Maryland Proclamation from the Governor of the State of Maryland. School Bus Safety Week, October sixteenth through the twentieth, 2023. Whereas, Maryland Student Transportation Administrators and Operators remain diligent and committed to ensuring the safe transportation of nearly seven hundred thousand students on a daily basis, and their efforts are critical to the operation and safety of our schools. And, whereas, all school bus drivers and attendants, employed or contracted by local education agencies, must achieve rigorous and specialized training as well as adhere to the highest standards of school bus safety. And, whereas, during the school year, these fleets cover millions of miles, operate in a variety of weather conditions, and have an outstanding safety record despite the ever-present challenges they face. And, whereas, Maryland is pleased to join the nation in recognizing National School Bus Safety Week in all our twenty-three counties, Baltimore City, and Seed School of Maryland, and recognize the school bus drivers and the attendants who connect our children to their school communities and keep Maryland students safe every day. Now, therefore, I, Wes Moore, Governor of the State of Maryland, do hereby proclaim October sixteenth through twentieth, 23, as School Bus Safety Week in Maryland, and do commend this observance to all of our citizens. And I definitely want to thank all our school bus drivers, because they're my buds. You all know that, and I'm their biggest cheerleader. And I- school does not run unless the wheels are turning, so I thank each and every bus driver, contractor, that is out there hardworking and getting our students to and from school safely, and thank you. At this time, we will move on to our Board- yeah, Board Member participation, and we are going to start with our student, Rep. Seetha. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Last month, on September nineteenth, we held a CZSGA staff meeting, planning out the details for the Fall General Assembly, and we can't wait to see everyone in attendance. On October third, I attended the second day of the MAB Annual Conference in Annapolis, and I had the honor of speaking to a panel featuring the student members from Montgomery County, Dorchester County, and Allegheny County, and our student member on the State Board of Education, Abby Sola Ayula. We were able to have a very interactive panel with the Board members across the state, and along with that, we were able to discuss many relevant issues regarding students in the roundtable discussions throughout the conference. This conference was an amazing opportunity to learn just how different and similar each county is in the State of Maryland.
Thank you. Ms. Sevigny.
Thank you, Ms. Herbert. Just the one meeting that I attended that I wanted to make a special shout-out for was the Family Life Advisory Committee meeting this past month. We had a new group of folks that were brought on board. There was- there's some continuation of members from the last term, but I'd say it was probably about half and half of folks that were continuing and new members of the group. And I just want to thank all of the members, both the ones continuing and the new group. I think that we had some excellent discussions, and, you know, it's some tough topics and- but I just want to thank everyone for joining that group, for spending your time, and for having very civil discussions, trying to get to the point where we can find the middle common ground across the county, so really appreciate that. The other thing I just want to say, there's so much activity going on with the restart of school for the year with all the fall sports and SATs and homecoming events, and I want to send out a special shout-out to some school advisors and counselors as the mom of a high school senior who is in the process of trying to fill out college applications, just like Sahi here. It's a very labor-intensive process, and I just want to thank all the educators and the advisors that are helping our high school seniors through that whole process. Very time-consuming and labor-intensive.
Thank you. Ms. Pataglia.
Since I wasn't here last month, sorry for my absence. It was my husband and I's twentieth wedding anniversary, the day of the meeting, and since he is my biggest cheerleader, I felt that I should be with him instead of here because if it wasn't for him, I wouldn't be here. So, I thought it was really important to spend time with my husband for our anniversary. In August, I- we had the delicate meeting, and I did a tour of East Middle School, which I'm really proud of how that facility is, and I hear the kids are loving it. So I'm really glad that everyone that was part of getting that up and going for the first day of school. In September, I attended the Career and Tech Meet and Greet for Students, the School Health Council, MAB Policy and Procedure Committee. I went to the Career and Technology Breakfast, which is absolutely delicious, by the way. They make my scrapbook just perfect. And I attended Mr. Shoemaker's Law and Order Update and a CAC meeting. In October so far, I attended the Back of Blue fundraiser, which the money raised went to our Canines for items that they need. I've already attended Senator Reed's fundraiser. He had helped out the Dewise Golf Tournament, which was nice. This past weekend, I attended the Fifth Hoffa Tailgate, and they also celebrated what would have been Jimmy's fortieth birthday. And, you know, it's- we have a lot of great foundations and organizations in this county that highlight very important topics. Bullying, addiction, domestic violence. So, just get involved with them if you can, donate to them if you can, because a lot of times, the things that they're trying to do, they need donations and funds to help other people out. So, just do what you can for those organizations. Last night, I attended the Farm Bureau Dinner, and then, of course, today, we had the joint meeting with the Commissioners today. October is National Bullying Prevention Month, which we had discussed and I had read over. One of my favorite nonprofits is B.R.A. Sunshine, and they do some- they're pretty new, and they've been doing some amazing things for bullying awareness. It is also Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so make sure, if you have not done your yearly exam, please go get it. It is really important, and early detection does save lives. And it is also Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Nulloxone, I wanted to touch base on, is also available in our local- Nulloxone, I wanted to touch base on, is also available in our local libraries. So it is free, and it has on there a QR, and you can scan it, and it'll tell you how to use that properly. Trick or treat, make sure you check your kids' candy. You talk to them about not accepting loose candy. There was a conversation that our state's attorney had at his event, and one of the things he said is that there is an extreme uptick in our ERs from children that are eating the edible cannabis. They're overdosing. Now, they're not overdosing to the point where they will die, but they are overdosing to the point they are extremely sick. So just make sure you have a talk with your kids about any type of loose items. And because of the recent events in Israel, please talk to your kids about sensitive material on social media, because this terrorist organization is posting it out there, and it is extremely traumatic, and it is extremely sensitive and horrific. So please just talk to your kids about what they're viewing and monitor them just a little bit extra right now. And I hope everyone has a safe Halloween, and I'm sorry, but please say a prayer for Israel at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Dorsey.
Okay, thanks, Mrs. Herbert. On September nineteenth and October first, I met with the co-chair and MAB staff to plan for the final Conference Program Committee meeting prior to our MAB Conference 2023. And from October second through the fourth, I was involved at our MAB Conference 2023. It was very exciting to welcome about two hundred board members, MAB staff, state board members, and members from PZAM, Mako, MSEA, NSBA, board attorneys, superintendents, and sponsors to our annual conference. The conference began with a warm welcome and introduction from MAB's new executive director, Milton Nagel. One of Milton's goals is to attend a local board meeting in each of the jurisdictions this year. So hopefully, he is going to be able to grace us with his presence at one of our meetings. At our opening lunch, we heard a powerful message from Dr. Eric Davis, who is Chief of Administration of Harford County Public Schools, and he talked about leadership maturity. This phrase was coined by Dr. Davis, and it centers around leaders' understanding that every action impacts the culture of people who are led. The two-and-one-half days were packed with workshops, our annual business meeting, roundtable discussions, blueprint breakout sessions, hot topics, a student panel, which included our very own student representative, Sahitha, and thank you so much for participating in that. We had our president's dinner and awards, and the swearing-in of our new executive officers and board directors. And at this time, I congratulate Mrs. Herbert for becoming a member of the Board of Directors for MAB. There is a three-term limit to being a Board of Director, and I have been serving for the last three years. So I am off of the Board of Directors at this time, but I'm certainly glad that Carroll County is going to be represented by you, Marsha.
Thank you.
We concluded our conference with keynote speakers, Chris and Nick Nickich. And they spoke on something that was called "One Percent Better: Reaching My Full Potential and How You Can Too." Chris is a student with Down Syndrome. He shared his personal story, and he really inspired others to make sure that we're shifting our focus from our disabilities to our abilities. And he talked about having tenacity and grit to get one percent better every day. His dad, Nick, explained the underlying principles of success and coaching to achieve your full potential using the One Percent Better system that he developed. By using this system, it was very noteworthy that Chris became an Ironman one-hundred-forty-point-six finisher. He's also been a Guinness Book Record holder, a Special Olympics Champion Ambassador, as well as having received several other accolades. I would like to personally thank PK Loa, Ed Omealy, and Rochelle Eisenberg and their associates for being one of the supporters of our annual conference, and it was a great conference, I feel, this year. And once we get all of our evaluation forms in, hopefully, we'll hear some positive feedback from members who were able to attend. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Whistler.
Thank you, Madam President. I have four items. On September twenty-third, I attended the Career and Tech Center breakfast, along with Ms. Pataglia. Principal Riddle, Assistant Principal Hopkins, and the entire staff did a fantastic job. I really wanted to make a special mention of Mr. Gruss, who was one of our criminal justice teachers there and a thirty-year-retired Baltimore County detective. He was gracious enough to give us and several other folks a tour of the facility, and he had such incredible passion for what he did, and he's so proud of where he works. But he and so many other dedicated teachers at the Career and Tech Center do so many great things for students. On September twenty-eighth, I also attended the Family Life Advisory Committee meeting. I want to echo Ms. Sevigny's comments and say thanks so much to those that are serving and those that did serve. Your work and collaboration with our teachers is really important, and your work really, really matters. On October ninth, I visited the College and Career Fair at the Ag Center. I want to give a special shout-out to the numerous CCPS counselors and other staff members who helped host over a hundred and twenty colleges and universities. The Ag Center was really packed with many high school juniors and seniors and their parents. Your efforts did a great deal to get parents and students the valuable information they need to take those next steps towards higher education. And lastly, earlier today, I attended our joint session with the Carroll County Board of Commissioners. As always, I really appreciate the collaboration and the opportunity to talk with these important partners to make sure we learn more about all of the blueprint requirements and find the necessary resources and ways ahead that we can work together on to improve our schools and spend every tax dollar wisely.
Thank you. Last month, I attended the Career and Tech Center's Big Country Breakfast, like a lot of others. It was a really ugly morning. It was raining, but they had great attendance, and it was very successful. And I want to thank the community for coming out and support that great facility. If you haven't had that chance, I know they'll be having one probably in, I think, probably December, so come on out. And as Dr. Dorsey mentioned, the Maryland Association Board of Education held their annual conference in Annapolis, and I was able to attend part of the conference, and it was really wonderful. It's a great opportunity for board members from public school systems around the state to come together and discuss topics that are affecting all of us. Throughout the month, I have visited several schools, and I went to outdoor school. And one morning, I was there at seven-thirty. It was pouring down, raining. The kids were swinging on the swings outside. They were shooting basketballs and running around, and they all came in for breakfast, and they just looked like they were having a ball. So my older granddaughter really missed that opportunity, and she says, "I hope I can go back as a counselor." And I said, "I hope so, too," because it is a wonderful week of learning opportunities, and Ms. Felter is always, does a great job up there. And I still turn my water off when I brush my teeth. She did teach me that when I, she was at North Carroll High School, so you all remember that. And I did attend the Carroll County Farm Bureau banquet and business meeting last night. I am a Carroll County farmer. And I just want to give to Ms. McCabe, the Farm Bureau had an educational committee proposal, and they had three things about the blueprint, community schools, and environmental curricula. And they proposed that, and I am going to pass that on to her and see what we can do. And again, I want to thank the three commissioners that met with us today. As always, hand in hand, we need to work together, and we cannot be the great school system we are without the backing of our Carroll County commissioners with their ideas and, of course, their funding. I can't forget that. So, Dr. McCabe, it's the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Herbert. I'd like to begin this evening by congratulating several students from the welding program at the Carroll County Career and Tech Center who received awards in the John F. Lincoln Foundation Welding Contest. In the welding sculpture category, Nicholas LaPetro was awarded gold for his sculpture of several logs featuring an axe and an owl. Katrina Thompson won bronze for fabricating a heron sitting atop a log, and Garin Schilling won bronze for making a flower with a stem and a holder to support it. In the welding project category, Tyler Simpkins was awarded gold for creating a coffee table from steel and wood, and Mason Warnock won bronze for building a smokeless fire pit. Congratulations to these students and their instructor, Mike Schweinberg. I would also like to thank First Financial Credit Union for making a $10,000 donation to Carroll County Public Schools. The donation will be used for the Children's Support Fund, which assists CCPS students and their families who are struggling to meet a variety of needs. These needs, which include food insecurity, lack of clothing and school supplies, and financial and housing instability, present significant barriers to learning. In celebration of its seventieth anniversary, First Financial recognized seven of its foundational partners by making $10,000 donations to each in support of their organizations. Their generosity and continued support of our schools is very much appreciated.
Well, thank you. All right, now we will move on to, there's no presentations this month. We will move on to reports, and our first one is the construction report. Have a good evening, folks.
Happy Halloween.
This is the monthly construction report. I'll point out that if you ride past East Middle, you'll see the area in front where the old school was is being graded to install the new parking area and the bus loop. In just a few months, we'll be planning an open house, once all the work is complete, to invite the public and former classes to see the new school. Mr. Marx is here for any questions.
I will say, Mr. Marx, when I emailed or texted you or emailed you that day, Dr. Dorsey is correct. When we had the MAB convention there, I'm sitting there at my table. I was waiting for Dr. McCabe, and this nice man came up. He introduced himself, gave him his card, and explained what he did. And I said, "Well, sir, I'm not sure if we use you or not for the construction," but as it all worked out, we did.
Yes, multi-visit, yes.
Yes, and he was a very nice man, and there you are. We are talking to people, and he came over and introduced himself. But that was a great networking for us, and then I went over and I found him later after the luncheon. And I told him, I said, "And by the way, we do use you." So that was, that's what that's all about, but he was very nice.
And that firm helped us out with many projects, not just there with, beginning of COVID, Career and Technology Center trying to bid the job without having people in there. They put their equipment in there, took three-hundred-sixty-degree shots of every single room, really helped us do that bid, launch that.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to give an example of what happens and how nice they were, so. All right, any other comments? We're going to move on then. Okay. I knew she was going to ask something.
I have to ask him something while he's up there at the podium, but great to see you. And so I think at our last board meeting, the school had only been open for one or two days. And so just wanted to check in on East Middle. So now that it's been up and running and students in the rooms for over a month, like everything's going smoothly? No significant issues?
No, no, not that we've, I mean, we're going through small stuff, usually adjustments on HVAC systems, stuff like that as we're going through, but nothing major. Everybody seems thrilled, good positive feedback from staff, so we're real happy with that. We're looking forward to getting the bus loop done, making that go a lot smoother, because it's a lot of pressure on parents and everybody, you know, but it is working, so we're happy about that.
So what's the anticipated completion date for the bus loop and the regrading and everything?
The contractual completion is the end of December, but we're hoping to try to get it done sooner. We'll see how well, there's a lot of dirt still to move, so.
Not soon enough.
That's right.
Thank you. All right, now we'll move on to action items. I need, I need a motion for the approval of the FY25 capital budget and the FY26 to '30 capital improvement plan request. So moved by Ms. Pataglia and seconded by?
I'll second.
By Ms. Sevigny.
The CIP was presented in September for discussion and returns this evening for action. Your action this evening will allow us to remain on schedule to get your requested CIP to the state and county in time for their annual budget processes. There are increases to the developmental budgets for the Sandy Mount Elementary K pre-K and Friendship Valley K pre-K and Pride additions, based on the work of the Construction Planning Committee. We are a bit out of sequence in that the work of the planning committee will come to you next month for a more involved discussion. We have staff available if you have questions on the CIP request.
Any questions? Ms. Sevigny.
Thanks, Ms. Herbert. I did have a couple of questions, and it was primarily surrounding, like, the kindergarten additions, like, so the portions of Sandy Mount. So I appreciate the fact that we're a little bit out of sequence, so we're kind of requesting the money as part of the request, but we haven't actually reviewed the information to say, you know, like whether we're comfortable with making that increase. But just trying to understand, so at the Sandy Mount portion, so how many new rooms are we ultimately talking about with?
So the addition that the, the option that the committee selected would provide a total of, in the addition, four kindergarten classrooms, and then there would be some renovations and another part of the addition for two pre-K classrooms. So the current school has two existing kindergarten rooms that were designed into the building, and they've converted another classroom to be a pre-K classroom. They have, they have other classrooms that are using for kindergarten, but they're just first-grade classrooms. But the location of those existing two kindergarten rooms and the pre-K room is at the front of the school. The only area to add on to the school, just because of the site and how tight it is, is in the back of the school towards the playground. They looked at options where we would just add two new kindergarten rooms and a new pre-K, but it would put those two, those three rooms at the complete opposite end of the school than the existing rooms. So the, another option was, we could, we could basically build a whole new wing and have an early childhood wing in the back of the school, and then those existing kindergarten rooms and existing pre-K rooms would turn back over to the school for use for other grades. So the committee, one, their projected enrollment is pretty significantly higher than their current capacity. The current kindergarten rooms are sub, you know, a typical kindergarten room is about a thousand square feet. That's what we've been planning for almost twenty years now. The kindergarten rooms at Sandy Mount are about eight hundred square feet, so they're significantly smaller than a typical kindergarten room. So by incorporating those existing rooms into the addition, it gets all of the kindergarten pre-K classrooms together so they can collaborate. But it also handles some projected overcrowding, and it does address the fact that their current kindergarten rooms are sub, not substandard, but they're significantly smaller than what we would typically build today.
So I did want to just kind of talk, thank you, Mr. Kane. I did want to just talk generally about, kind of tying it to the discussion that we had with the commissioners at the work session, how there's implications of, you know, pre-K additions and everything from the blueprint, and how do we kind of optimize all of this with a lot of moving targets going on right now? So I just wanted to say, like, I think that this is a reasonable request of the commissioners for this year. I think when we're looking at sort of the additional five years out, we're going to have to think long and hard about that next year. Especially with, you know, if we do have to move forward with some of the pre-K pieces, then, you know, we're potentially going to have to rethink, you know, the Liberty High School price tag is a bit of a showstopper, or a heartstopper, I should say, at a hundred and forty-three million. So kind of thinking about, okay, how do we deal with those priorities in connection with all the stuff that's also coming down the pike from the blueprint? So I think, like, I'm comfortable with where we are for the '25 funding request, but I think that there's a lot of additional discussion and thought that needs to go into the five years out for the next CIP.
You are right, Dawn, because we're, like, in flight, and we're trying to build the plane at the same time because of the unknown. We don't know. And we know there are going to be changes in that blueprint. It's not going to stay the same. So, yeah, that ship's going to sail, but I don't know, we just don't know. We just don't know. It's too many variables, so that was a very good point.
And the, the one, the last thing I wanted to ask was, I know we sent this out for public comment. Did we, did we receive any?
Ms. Gaddis, did we receive public comment about this particular item, the approval of the capital budget?
No.
That's why I was asking, I didn't recall seeing anything.
I don't see anything.
Wanted to make sure I didn't miss any of it.
All right. Okay, I call for the vote. All those signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now I need a motion for the approval of the Comprehensive Maintenance Plan.
So moved.
So moved by Dr. Dorsey, seconded by?
Second.
By Ms. Pataglia.
The Interagency Commission on School Construction, the IAC, requires that each local school system complete an annual comprehensive maintenance plan, the CMP. The CMP describes the facility's inventory, goals for maintenance, planning, and allocation of resources within the maintenance program. Staff are available for any questions you may have.
Ms. Sevigny.
Thanks. Dr. McCabe, I guess, Mr. Prokop is coming up? Thanks, Ray. Just a couple of quick questions. I have questions on three of the pages, but on page six, it, it talks about maintenance staff positions.
Yes.
I was just, could you, could you speak to whether there are any changes in, in the number of positions from last year?
It's a little easier to talk to the, if you look at page seven, where it totals up the staffing positions. And the next page has the two tables. It's a little, these positions are reflected here. And so what you'll see is in '22, from '22 to '23 to '24, the custodial staffing increased by six. Now, you might not recall from last year, there was a, it was underreported. The Finance Department doing some auditing of their, their information found that two positions were underreported, and the other four are, are for the Career and Tech. They were added as part of the Career and Tech-
Right.
-project. That's, that's it.
Okay, so I, I did actually miss that there was the totals here, the current staffing of, so 63 for maintenance staffing. That looks like it stayed the same.
Yes.
And then, so up by two on the custodial, and that's because of Career and Tech, and that's the-
Correct.
Okay, so that's, that's the only change then? Okay, great, thank you. And then I did have a question on page 12, where we're splitting out preventive maintenance and corrective maintenance.
Right.
And then kind of looking at what the goal was for '23 versus the actual for '23, and then setting a new goal for '24. And it looks like for the preventive maintenance, we're, we're basically setting the goal very close to the '23 actual?
The, yes, yes, we're, we're setting it slightly above. We, between '20, what we did during '23, going from 2,000 to 10, over 10,000 preventive maintenance work orders, was as a result of using our, 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 our maintenance work order system to initiate preventive maintenance work orders directly to the school. So they, at the school, we're using that staff, the custodial staff, to take care of the more repetitive things that they, that they can handle, which leaves our maintenance staff more, or free to address more serious issues in the schools. So that has increased a great deal, and that's why the, it's only a small amount between '23 and, and '24.
From the actual to the-
From the actual, that's right. So, so we're, so the, the, the big jump was because we're utilizing our work order system more effectively.
Okay. Okay, so not necessarily that there are that many more work orders, we're just using the, the system more effectively?
Well, I would say that we're, we are doing more preventive maintenance, but we're now, we're using, using the technology we have to initiate those, that, that, the preventive maintenance.
Okay.
So to communicate to the staff that it needs to be done. And then it also gives us the, a database that we can look into, we can adjust if we need to. It gives us a reporting capability.
Okay. Okay, I guess I was, I was thinking that, now this is from a preventive maintenance perspective. Maybe, maybe, like, I was gonna ask about corrective maintenance, or, you know, the fact that we now have, I know East Middle had a lot of work orders in the past on both sides, and, you know, with the new school, would that have a significant impact on either of these measures? Would you expect that to have a significant impact?
Significant? I, I, I don't know that I'd go, I, I would, I would expect things would get, would be easier that, you know, yes. I, I don't, I, it would be hard for me to quantify that. But we could, but our, our goal is obviously to go more towards preventive in, anyway. That's, that's where we're, we're hoping to go. We're hoping to reduce those corrective work orders. We could look at it, we could do a report. We could check, you know, this time next year, we could, we could look at a report and, and make a, and do a comparison, see what, see what the differences are.
Okay, just making sure that we don't need to rebase line or something like that?
I don't know, no. We, we, because we do change, I mean, we're changing square footage with additions and, and things like that, it, it would be very difficult to try to put a, put a line in the sand and re-benchmark.
Okay, okay, gotcha. And then on page 13, I was looking at the, so the, the different categories of, you know, preventive maintenance and corrective maintenance. It looks like the '23 and '24 budget, like, the, the cost per square footage, like, that, that, those are minor increases. But for deferred maintenance, that went up significantly. The all-maintenance category and the M and O combined, the, the cost per square footage went up dramatically for each of those three categories, which was driving up the budget quite a lot. So just trying to understand what would be driving up those, those costs per square foot?
Well, that would be the, mostly it has to do with the, with the capital money. We're investing more in the, in the system. So the, the capital becomes the, the driver there, the increase from '23 to '24 in the capital budget. So we're, we're investing more on the, on the capital side, which, which gives us the higher number, which is, is better in the long run in terms of taking care of our deferred maintenance. We're going in the, in the right direction with those numbers increasing.
Okay, okay, so we're converting them into CIP, okay, that makes sense. For the, for the CIP projects, can you help me understand for the, the all-maintenance and the M and O combined, what would drive the cost per square foot for those two?
That's, we're just adding up the M and O combined, we're just adding up every, all the, the cells above. So it, it should follow that, if I understand your question, I mean, it just, it just follows that the more we put in on the capital side, the higher that number's gonna be, when we get to the M and O, the maintenance and operations, maintenance and operations combined with the deferred maintenance.
Okay, I gotcha. I, this, so this number is actually showing, I, I had interpreted it maybe not quite right. I was thinking that this meant that our costs were actually going up per square footage, but it's just from the work that we're doing, this is what it turns out to be.
Right.
Okay, for the, the cost that we've committed to those projects. Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
All right.
That's all I had, Ms. Herbert.
I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now I need a motion for the approval of a ward of bids. By Ms. Pataglia and seconded by? I was gonna say, Mr. Whistler, I haven't heard anything out of you. Mr. Whistler.
There are only three items on the award of bids tonight. The first is commercial cafeteria equipment and furniture. This is for a refrigerator at Westminster High School and a temperature-controlled cabinet at Century High School, both from the Food Services Program Fund. Second, we have physical education supplies. This is for the annual buying guide for physical education supplies as needed. And lastly, we have a sole-source Apple Computers procurement, and this award is for computers that are specifically to be used for the video production program.
Ms. Pataglia.
Just a quick question about the Apple Computers. What is the video production gonna be doing with the current ones that they have?
With the?
The current computers?
The ones that they would be replacing? I don't, I don't know specifically. With larger equipment, we surplus it on public auction. I, I assume with equipment like that, it probably goes through a recycle process. I'd have to check and get back to you, I'm not, I'm not really sure.
Because the ones they have did not look like they were that old. But then again, we know technology changes on a daily basis.
I think when I look back, Mr. Davis was nodding his head, yes, that that sort of goes into the recycling program. And some of it, I guess to your point about the life, some of it's based on sort of the warranty and the cost of replacement. So, you know, sometimes, a couple of things over time, people see how much we pay for a computer, and they may say, "Well, that's more than I would pay at home," but we're also buying the warranty, because if that machine goes down, we need it for instruction within 24 hours roughly, or whatever. You know, you're not necessarily paying for that as a citizen. And so the lifecycle might seem less than you, you, you might say, "Well, I could get more out of that at home," but we need, we need it with the warranty as well, so that those machines can stay either in business use or in the, in the program use.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you. And just for old times' sake, since Mr. Johnson's not here, I guess the physical education supplies is self-inflating balls.
That's exactly right. All right, I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously.
Ms. Herbert, before we move on, before we move on to another topic, could I just ask a quick question about, like, so we're talking about the, the computers here. Just a question about, so we know that, you know, we, we, we had the purchase of all the computers for, you know, have a one-to-one for all of our students after the, the pandemic. And do, do we have a plan coming up of it? Because I'm sure that, you know, we're, we're gonna have to start recycling and renewing a lot of those, and that's gonna be a big-ticket item.
We do. And so as part of the budget development process as a whole, we're incorporating Mr. Davis and his team's work of, you know, we've maybe quadrupled the inventory, I'm not even sure. You know, the inventory is much, much larger than it was pre-pandemic. And so we're trying to, we're trying to map out a plan to bring to the superintendent that she'll then incorporate in her budget conversations with you as to how do we now address that replenishment cycle going forward? And also the, the whole replenishment cycle. And, and in some ways, it's, minus the student devices, we've tended to move away from desktops to laptop units and, and labs that used to be sort of a thing, like, computer cart labs. Once you're at one-to-one, you, you know, that rebalances the numbers favorably in some cases, but overall, overall, it's, it's gone way up. And so we're trying to work out sort of an ongoing budget plan of, you know, how do we chunk that and then, and then build in an approach to, to have a meaningful replacements cycle as proactively as we can? Or can we dedicate, you know, year-end money each time? I think we have that slated to be kind of its, you know, a part of the discussion at the December work session. A little bit more about that plan and what that would look like chunked out over four or five years of a cycle.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. O'Neil, that's perfect.
All right. Okay, now I need a motion for the acceptance of independent auditors' report FY 2023.
So moved.
By Mr. Whistler and seconded by Dr. Dorsey.
State education law requires each Board of Education to have an independent auditor conduct an annual audit of our financial transactions and accounts. I'm pleased to share that our audit by Clifton Larson Allen was successful. It has been reviewed by your board-appointed audit committee and is brought tonight for your acceptance.
All right, I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Ms. Sevigny, you feeling okay? And now I need a motion for the approval of the High School Program of Studies for 2024-2025. By Ms. Pataglia, seconded by, by Mr. Whistler.
In September, we brought for your discussion proposed changes to the High School Program of Studies for the 2024-25 school year. They return now for your action. Mr. Warnick is here to answer any questions.
Ms. Sevigny.
Hi, Mr. Warnick. Just a couple of quick questions. The, the updates to the graduation requirements on pages 10 and 11? That whole section is highlighted, not just changes? Was that because the, was the whole section added to the, the guide?
It, it is. It was actually reworded to ensure that we're meeting graduation requirements as well as, you know, ensuring that the blueprint, you know, what, what is covered as well. So it's just, it was rewritten, not completely revised, but just rewritten.
Okay.
To support individuals in reading it, understanding it, making it more user-friendly for our parents as well.
Okay, so there weren't really any changes to the requirements themselves? It was just the way it was presented?
Correct, correct.
Okay, okay, that's what I wanted to understand. I just, it, it didn't look like there were any changes to me, I just wanted to make sure.
Exactly, and like, PRC, MCAP, changing just the language to make sure that it aligns with what we're currently providing with, you know, assessments for students and all.
Okay, gotcha. And I, I did have a question about the updates to the Service Learning Program on page 14. I did notice that AP GOV now gets you 10 service learning hours?
It is actually embedded, so there are service learning projects embedded with government and some of our courses. So what we're trying to do is, because we found it hard for students to receive some of the service learning outside, we're trying to embed it within some of our curriculum now. So that there would actually be products within the curriculum that they would receive service learning, similar to outdoor school.
Okay, okay, that, that I'm comfortable with. Like, I, I wasn't sure I was understanding, I was like, why would you suddenly now just get 10-
Right.
-credits for taking that particular class? So, okay, you really want it to be service-oriented?
Absolutely.
So, okay, great, thank you.
Ms. Pataglia.
Okay, so I have two questions. The first one is, we have the high school assessment requirements. Does AP tests also qualify for that instead? So if you're taking, taking AP Government, couldn't that be the same as the government assessment?
Currently, we are ensuring that our students take, are the MCAP assessment in Government, all students at this point.
Okay, so a student that's in AP, they're gonna take it twice technically then?
Possibly, but the, there's a, there's, the thought, the rationale behind that is not all students are required to sit for the exam that may enroll in an AP course. And we didn't want to put a student in a situation where they hadn't sat for the, for, for the assessment. Because you can meet the requirement through the, through the AP exam, but there's not a requirement that you take the AP exam as part of the course. So it was our rationale in thinking, yes, it's, it's, it could be a challenge, but I think it's safer for the student in the end to be able to take both assessments. That way, if something happens, they're covered and we're not, you know, in a situation where a student, you know, didn't sit for one of the assessments and has to, has to sit at a later date in time when they haven't had the coursework.
Okay, I mean, I, I understand, but also at the same time, like, I'm like, we're, we're like testing our kids to kingdom come. I mean, it's just insane. That's just, that's what I'm just looking at, like, it's like, like you're, they're being repetitive in something.
I, I'm hopeful in time that as, as we get further guidance from the state on the requirements, that, that that will be clarified. But I think for now, that's probably our safest practice, is to have the students take both the, the MCAP and the, and the AP exam.
Okay. All right, and then a second question.
Sure, the other piece with taking the MCAP, we actually would have results then for our students to see how well they did and what areas we may need to focus on with them, you know, as, as it continues through their educational career, where the AP exam, we wouldn't necessarily have that.
Okay. All right, and then a second question. Is there any more discussion regarding more availability for classes virtually, like Sign Language and Other World Languages? Some more equitable learning for students?
We have looked at it, and we actually had a course two years ago that we were going to have virtual through World Language, and there was not enough participation, actually, people signing up. I think especially with certain areas, students feel more comfortable with actually having, you know, a teacher in front of them. Makes it a little bit more easier, as well as, you know, it helps to have a, it aligns with their schedule better if it's taken within their school, their own school, because then they can align it, especially with dual enrollment and other programs now. So we don't see as many students looking at those virtual options. We see more of students wanting the dual enrollment aspect instead of, because they can take some of those courses as well at the community college.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, I just have a question on the courses that are offered. So we see a very wide variety of courses that are offered throughout this, but a lot of the time, students don't really see a lot of these options in their own school. I was wondering how many of these- see a lot of these options in their own school, I was wondering, how many of these classes offered are in our school systems, whether, are they all in our schools?
They would be at one of our high schools, exactly, so all these courses are somewhere within our, our high schools.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And one must remember that sometimes in high schools, we offer it one year, and then we don't offer it the next, and they, they flip-flop the, you know, the number one and the number two, and that's why sometimes you wonder, what are we doing, but, but that's how it works sometimes.
Absolutely.
And there is an option if a student wants to take a course that's offered only at one high school and not the other, to transfer or transport themselves by any chance?
I, I'm assuming we could make arrangements, absolutely, if there's one, if there, if the student's able to transport.
We have situations, right, as we speak, it comes down to logistics, in the southern end, there are students that are leaving Century to go to Liberty, et cetera, same with Westminster and Winters Mill, and then there are kids that just transfer schools, they do the out-of-district process to go to another school for certain things, so those would be the two options, obviously, transportation is always, has, you know, has to be a part of that, so.
Thank you.
I think your question is, we, we do try to make accommodations wherever possible, right, like, when the, when the scheduling comes out, and if, if a student needs something to fit into their schedule that isn't necessarily being offered, like, we, we do do our best to try to get them to another school for that course, or?
Absolutely, support them. Now, like, you're looking at specific areas and programs, so it, it's where we currently, you know, have support from with, within our colleges, that we currently have different types of dual enrollment supports, so it's, it's through our dual enrollment that we, these are the colleges that we work with for dual enrollment.
Okay, so, I mean, that's what I'm wondering is, because it looks like some of them had changed over time, like it says, to be decided, like, for instance, Business Administration Management, Pennsylvania College of Technology, it says to be decided now.
That, that's because they may no longer offer it, and we're looking for a college that would offer it, that would pair up with us.
Okay, all right, so, I mean, so that's why I'm just, I just wanted to make sure is, like, there is, there is gonna be, it's fluid, like, it will always change because, depending upon what they're willing to accept or not.
Exactly, oh, well, as well as what programs are changing within the colleges, because some programs change often, so we're always trying to look at which colleges are offering it, so that when our students do come in with any type of credits, we can, we can offer those, those credits.
Now, is that something that counselors aren't talking to the kids about, because I can, I can tell you that I think it's one thing, current students that I've seen looking at Carrer Tech for next year, like, they're starting to eye up and see, well, what college potentially will take the credits of what I'm looking to go into.
So often, what, a counselor has always told my own children, that you need to contact, you want to make sure that you contact the admissions and the registrar at the college, so that you can give them the exact number, as well as the wording of the program or the course, so that they can go see if it is accepted, because again, it's up to the college of what programs, what courses they actually accept, including any dual enrollment courses, if it's not from their, their particular college.
Okay, and I think that's something good to parents, if you're listening, you know, double-check on that stuff, because I think that's something, you know, when we're talking about making our kids planning ahead for their futures and making a plan for a career or college-ready, like, this is something they definitely need to, to keep in mind, too, when they're looking at that.
Absolutely.
All right, I call for the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it passes unanimously. Now I need a motion for the approval of the curriculum guide implementation for 2023-2024.
So moved.
By Ms. Savigny and seconded by Mr. Whistler.
Also in September, we brought for your discussion all curricular revisions that we developed during the prior school year. They now return for your approval to then be implemented during the 2023-24 school year. Mr. Wernick remains to answer any questions you may have.
Seeing none, I call for the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it passes unanimously. Now I need an approval, a motion for the approval of the personnel action items.
So moved.
By Dr. Dorsey, seconded by?
Second.
By Ms. Pataglia.
For the monthly personnel action items, there are 10 new hires, one retire-rehire, one release from contract, and one broken contract.
Comments, questions? Seeing none, I call for the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it passes unanimously. At this time, we have a discussion on 7A, proposed revisions to board policy, B.C.-ethics.
We are bringing for discussion revisions to your ethics policy that reflect recent legislative changes to the public ethics law. We worked with Mr. Constas from PK Law to incorporate the changes necessary to comply with the current law. Additionally, unlike other policies, this one requires not only your approval, but also approval by the State Ethics Commission. Mr. Constas has worked with legal counsel to the State Ethics Commission, so that we know that if you ultimately adopt these changes, they are approved as conforming with state law.
Ms. Savigny?
I just have a, a quick question about the, the statement that was added at the bottom of page one, it just says, it is the intention of the board that this policy be liberally construed to accomplish its purpose. What is the purpose of that statement?
That would mean if there is any doubt, you go for the more liberal construction to make the ethics rules cover you.
Okay, so make it?
Broader.
Broader, have bigger reach, so to speak.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
All right, thank you very much. Under new business, Ms. Pataglia tagged me, and she said she has to announce one more thing.
So real quick, we're getting ready to start winter sports, and workouts are starting to go into effect, so, good luck to everybody finishing up fall, good luck to everybody going into winter, and there are drama productions that are getting ready to take place, so make sure that you go and see them and support our local arts here in Carroll County, and I believe on Saturday, there is a band competition at Westminster High School. Go, make sure you root on our wonderful band kids, because let me tell you something, they work hard, they work just as hard as the football players, so make sure you go to support our, our local arts this coming week.
You want to see Mr. Shockney, he'll be there.
And Mr. Burke.
And Mr. Burke, for, for anybody that wants their signatures or autographs. All right, and, under new business?
Oh, okay, yep.
Under new business, I have Mr. Whistler, please.
Yes, Madam President, I'd like to make a motion that we ask staff to review policy IIAA, to consider including a provision or that restricts explicit sexual content in our instructional materials. I'd suggest that you consider a clear definition of explicit sexual content and have that derived from federal and state laws and FCC decency standards.
I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
I will second that to, to discuss a little further.
Dr. Dorsey?
No, no, I have a question, but we should have a second first.
Yes, okay, and, Ms. Savigny, okay, now we have a second, now we will open up discussion on the floor.
Is that a motion referring to the health curriculum?
No, I just wanted to, yeah, just the general policy, IIAA. Yeah.
Do we need to clarify that, that it's not referring to the health?
No, it really just makes sure that there's a backstop there, that, so that we can, and at least in my opinion, make sure that instructional materials and supplemental materials do not include explicit sexual activity or explicit sexual content. So it doesn't necessarily have to relate to state requirements or state curriculum, but again, I just wanted to see if the staff could come to us with a recommendation.
I have a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I have a question on how exactly would, when, if forming this policy, how would we define exactly what sexually explicit content is? Because as, as a literature student currently, it's a very vague term for a lot of us, and this can be stated in simple undertones when you're reading any passage of text versus explicitly describing the act. So how exactly would you formulate some type of method of finding this if you're to form this policy?
We already have a policy, we're adding this, and that's why we put that out to our employees to come back with suggestions, opportunities, written explanations, and then it'll come back up for discussion. That's how, that's how we will work that, okay?
Okay, I think there's a lot of confusion in the community as to what's going on recently, so I think we'd just like to take a look at the policy and see what suggestions staff might have to prove it to remove ambiguity and, and provide a little more clarity around things, so I think.
Does that help you with your answer?
Uh, yes, I just have one more question, um, when, so a lot of students are, you know, coming out to our meetings, and they're talking about how they believe our sort of procedure about this is different from what they expected. Something that I think would be really helpful to the student population is giving a sort of statement on every single procedure that is happening, because a lot of students are confused on how exactly the book reconsideration process.
Oh, yeah, because this is nothing with, I mean, this is just doing a definition of what, Mr. Whistler, it has nothing to do with the, the policy for reconsideration, we're just, we're just.
It's not associated with reconsideration.
No, we're not, yes, we just want a good definition, clear-cut, concise definition that will reduce confusion, ambiguity, I.
Right, and to be sure, this is regarding instructional materials, so materials that are taught in the classroom, materials that teachers sort of review to kids.
Curriculum, yes, yes, yes.
I think, I think what I'm hearing is?
That it would be, we're talking about instructional and supplemental materials? Yes.
Yeah, board policy, IIAA covers instructional materials, including supplemental materials, so.
And we just need a clear, concise definition, and I think that will help a lot, that, I think that'll clear a lot of things up. And you all have to bring it back to us, and thank you very much. All right, now, since we've had a discussion, then we have a motion, I have to call for a vote. All those in favor to go forward, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it passes unanimously, and thank you very much. And we are going to move forward then, at 5 o'clock on Wednesday, November 8th, we will have a board meeting here with public participation in the boardroom at 125 North Court Street. Have a wonderful evening and happy Halloween.